Reminder, this is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast and posterity. You all could please rise with pleasure, we appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is to discuss, review an act on ISM Solar, Act Three, LLC's Subplan Modification and Rule.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, all right, good evening, my name's Josh Barkus, I'm on the development team at Borrego. With me tonight is Mike Conway, who's also on the development team and in our Energy Storage Division. He joined us tonight to maybe answer some new questions that have come about. But just as a refresher, we were probably here maybe four, six weeks ago before the holidays for an informal hearing with you all to basically talk about this project and how we've come on to finish the development process, leading into construction of the project. And we had basically asked for a handful of minor modifications, which we voted on that night, or which we agreed were minor modifications. So tonight's our first public hearing to basically review that. Essentially, what we were working to do was, you know, more or less a site optimization process, updating the access to the site, the layout of the solar panels within the approved footprint. So we haven't changed the footprint or proposed anything there, we've just kind of redesigned the system on the inside. And we've added an energy storage system, batteries into the project. And basically, we've been working over the last few weeks through the town and through the peer reviewer to go through, you know, the list of those changes. And as of yesterday, we actually got an updated, an updated letter from Mr. Williams with, you know, basically the last two or three items to finish things off. I assume you all have those in your packets tonight. One of the items that was on there remaining was for us to have sign off from the fire chief about the proposed access road, which we received in, through an email, maybe just a couple hours after that letter was written. Has everybody seen that so far yet? Okay. And then the other two remaining items had to do with coming back in for meetings prior to construction. So essentially, we're here tonight to walk you through any changes, answer some questions, and what we'd ask if, if the board feels they're ready would be a vote to approve the minor modification changes with reference to the most updated plans that we just handed out to you.
Peter, you have any other comments other than what your January fifteenth letter?
No, no, I mean, again, back and forth with the applicants. The plan, they had submitted plans earlier this week, and there were two kind of, two minor changes, which are, you know, technical, which these plants that I represent, they addressed. They're basically just, you know, my recommended, two recommendations on conditions and fire chief approval. I did not see the email from the fire chief, if you have an extra copy of that.
Sure.
Other than that.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to comment on the police chief's, I mean, the fire chief email, which says he does have concerns for the roadway besides the ray tube going, and you were going to explain how you're going to do that. You know, we're concerned about washout, grading issues.
Correct.
You got a plan for that?
We do, yep. So we've added an infiltration basin, and this is one of the fourth and fifth page. It's a detail of how we're going to kind of circumvent that first array as you work your way through.
There's quite a hill going up.
There is, and, and the reason that we've actually, you know, proposed this access around it is, is for a couple reasons. Number one, bringing, you know, large trucks through the middle of an array, from a liability standpoint, it's kind of a recipe for, for an accident to happen. As you pull in through the fence, it's a very much-
You have the transformers in the middle too, don't you?
The transformers on the existing project, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, they're in the middle.
Right next to the road.
Yeah, there's quite a, I mean, that's, if you kind of look up there and you imagine driving a pickup truck in there.
I remember that.
Yeah, it'd be even tougher with a big truck. So from a liability standpoint, I think something would get damaged. Also, from an access standpoint, in the future, to not have to arrive here in an emergency, open the gate, drive through, open the gate and get out, we think this is a better plan as well. You know, whether it's a fire, you know, an emergency in the town, or if it's more of an operations and maintenance thing, if a couple guys in pickup trucks are showing up, we'd like to circumvent this. And basically, this road, it's, it's going to be a tough road, but it's going through an area that's previously disturbed from the prior project, and we've got an infiltration basin there. I believe the stormwater calculations with Mr. Williams and our engineering team have been validated for that, for that basin.
This basin was included in the calculations? We call C. Was there additional calculation at the back?
I'm not the civil engineer who, Mr. David Albrecht, who's not here tonight.
I have a few issues with the road the way it sits right now.
Correct.
Are you the original owners of this project?
We are not, so just to, we'll kind of bring the full circle there. So there's a developer on the project who received the permit for this project, who also permitted the first one. The owner of the first system is NRG Power, Clearway Energy, so that group owns the existing system. After speaking with you all a couple weeks ago, made a phone call to them to basically express the concerns about some of the roadway out here, their head of O and M from Massachusetts went out and visited the site, confirmed that it's, it's tough in there right now, it needs to be improved. I've also spoken to a butter to the north here, who had some concerns about some of the roadway up in the front here. So I've passed that, the contact information for that person at Clearway, NRG, along to Mr. Pacico.
Yes.
So that they can work together to, to handle that. But they, they understand that the O and M, there, there's some work that needs to be done to the road and its existing condition right now.
I mean, you know, just to drive my pickup truck down there, it's touching both sides of my truck, so imagine what, our fire truck is way wider than my truck.
Yep, correct. So what are, I guess, what's, you're talking about the access here, how it's, it's narrow? Or are you talking about back down here, or both?
Yeah, it was narrow in a few places.
Yep.
Just getting to that first wetlands area, the one I'm concerned about with the, they tell me there's a culvert, but I don't see no place there. And to bring in more vehicles over that throughout, especially the spring, when we're going to have heavy runoff, I'd hate to see a lot more vehicles going back there until there's work done on the road.
Work done on the existing project, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, absolutely, I couldn't agree more. We totally agree. One of the battles I'm fighting here is that there's a project that's there that needs to improve the roadway before we even show up to work. And then obviously, our responsibility is to maintain the, the road in its condition the day we show up and, and leave it in a condition that works. So I think there's, I think there's two issues, right? One related to the existing project, and then another making sure that we leave it in the proper, in the proper form. So I, I would, I would, you know, if I could suggest, I would, I wouldn't have a problem if the condition of our permit included improvement of the road prior to our arrival, or approval of our modification would require improvement of the existing conditions. I wouldn't have any problem with that.
The last solar company that we just granted, they gave us a, a bond, a landscaping bond too, for anything that they weren't taking care of. That was nice.
So I, I guess-
I don't know, have you been up there?
I have, yes.
All right, so.
Mostly in July and August, not, not during the wet season.
But I mean, that road itself.
Yeah.
You know, and the stone walls and just scenery alone, you know? Those stone walls have been there for 300 years. You're pulling out of Mr. Carr's driveway, who's lived there his whole life, and you know, he's used to seeing beautiful scenery, nice and quiet, and now there's a mess there, you know, because of a solar farm. Whatever we can do to make Mr. Carr happy, make the residents happy, and keep the rural character of the neighborhood looking good, and where? And one of the things is, we require 12 feet of the road to be 12 feet wide. From what he's saying, it's less than eight feet wide, am I correct, or am I wrong? You know, there's a lot of overgrowth, Joe, stuff that are growing in, it needs to be trimmed back. But, you know, if the project is not done, and it's already overgrown, what's going to happen 10 years down the line?
So I guess, I mean, so I'm thinking two things here, you know, what responsibility falls upon the existing project and what falls upon the new permit for the new project, right? I'm totally open and reasonable to having those conditions. I'm, I'm not totally sure how, how to respond to the question, just given that there's a, there's a permit for this project, and we're, you know, trying to redesign our, you know, some things about our system in the fence line and along this area. But I totally hear your point and support it.
Is your company buying out this company?
No, so we're, we basically-
So two different companies.
Yeah, there's a, well, there's a company that only owns the existing system. We are the, the, the group that's going to do the construction for the new system, and our plan is to sell it to the existing owner, so they'll own both systems on the same property. We were not involved in the first project, like, our involvement in this project just started about a, you know, a couple lots ago.
So in order for you to get back there, you need to use their road?
We do, yep.
Okay, so tell them they need to fix their road.
I actually already have. So, so part of what you're asking for is exactly what I'm asking that company to do, like, hey, you want us to show up and build a big, a big project for you using your existing roads? They went out there the other day and they agreed they had to improve the road. So whether, whether that's enacted on the, the permit of the existing project, or the, the modification to the existing permit for the second project, that's where I'm, I'm not sure where to, where to point that back out toward.
Is that enough of a running system already, is that already-
The one that's there?
Yes, yes, all right.
Yes, it is, it is.
And we, we should look into what it is that we have on there for them to actually maintain that road.
Their O and M plan.
Hmm, that's interesting. I mean, if it's, if it's been up and running for what, a year?
Year or so.
And it's already that way?
Well, it's that way because they're not maintaining it.
Right, well, yeah, that's my point, what's going to happen two, three, five years down the line?
They already made a lot of promises before last time, you know, we had a site visit out there and they're for them to do this and that.
So one thing, I'm wondering if, so that, the project that's there today was, was owned by one group and sold to a new group. The original owner actually went out of business, and Clearway or NRG Power now owns it. So they essentially bought somewhat of a distressed asset, so sometimes when, when that happens, you know, maybe the group you met with was the first group, and then they were gone, and then, you know, this new group. Because when I talked to the head of O and M in Massachusetts for these guys, he had never received a phone call or heard from anybody about this project. That's what he says, right? He could certainly be, you know, maybe someone else got a phone call, but I think that's really where the disconnect came from on a lot of the stuff we're talking about here. But we need a road that can allow an 18 wheeler to get back there and deliver equipment and all that, you know, just as, just as important-
It's a way back there.
It is, it's a long ride. That's like, the toughest part about this project is getting the power back out here, so the access becomes difficult.
And that hill is quite steep.
It is, yeah.
You don't want to check all the brakes before you come down.
And you might also consider that this plan represents a minor modification to the prior approval of the first one, which would have to be coming for the board for approval. They're changing the layout of their access road, the first project.
Well, won't that all remain as is? This is more for access to just the second project, right?
This is a temporary access road, that will be restored when it's done?
Are we talking about right down here?
Yeah, right down here.
No, we would keep that there.
Okay, so that's within the first project.
But when we-
Well, doesn't it circumvent the first project?
When we-
It's on the same property, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
The first project always had the access road always going out to the, the power lines.
Correct, yeah, it stops, right, stops right here, and then there's a, there's a permanent road that isn't built right here? So we'll be, we'll be, this is new, and this is new. Yeah, I guess, so anything in dark is new, and then the rest is the existing access.
So the first project had the road, because, because they had to go around for equipment to the other side.
I think when we were, when we were there on the site visit, the fire chief wanted that road to be permanent, so that he could get all the way around.
Right.
And there was a steep section that he wanted improved, so that his vehicles could get up.
He put it over to the side at the upper part, and not this lower section around in here, that's brand new.
This, this is brand new.
So I don't remember, I remember, what you're saying is brand new, I don't recall that that, not using it when we did our site visit.
That wasn't-
Oh, sorry, this is not here, this is one of our requested minor modifications, is to add this. So instead of coming through the array and opening the gates, we can, we can come down around.
Yeah, I understand.
Minor modification can, I mean, did they submit the paperwork for the both projects to be modified?
Right.
Well, it'd be a lot easier to go through the middle of that array, but I'd see what you mean if a truck, that's one of your things.
Yeah, a truck, a truck will have trouble fitting, it's a liability.
Especially with the electric, right next, I mean, there's that steep slope you go up, and there's the transformer, it's sitting right there.
Exactly. And then from an emergency access, like, someone has to open a gate, open a gate, open a gate, to get, you know, to get back here for something.
So to do it right, Phase One people should be coming in here for a minor modification. So we could still vote on an approval or not on your project, but that would be another condition, that the Phase One people come in and request a modification to their plan, because-
So I, oh, I'm sorry.
It is their plan that you're asking for a modification, not your plan.
So that's where I'm a little confused, I'm, I'm not necessarily saying I'm right, but as, as you, the existing access for the arrays is absolutely staying there. We're adding a section off of that, so I guess, does that really change the first, the first, you know, because this is basically something we're trying to permit and approve for only this third project that's going to be out, or third array that's going to be out here. So, so I guess I'm, I'm just not-
Oh, that's, okay, now, all right, now.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the exact lead to the first project.
I get it, I'm, I was confused, the first project is what is there now?
Yes, there, then the easement's right here, project right here.
Now I understand, that's where my confusion was.
We don't have a big enough piece of paper, that's the problem.
All right, now I get it. So, so we're not, not talking about a minor modification to the array to the left on the paper, we're talking about further out.
Yeah, so this is where it continues, easement, new project.
So the road that I was describing is the lower road darkened.
Right.
As, as the steep-
And that's there, that's, that's there, and that was true.
And yes, the first array, we went through the middle of, okay.
Yep, and this is-
Pardon my confusion, it's just too many arrays.
I know, I hear you.
And that's just not the only one in town either.
Totally.
So ownership of the land is?
The same person for everything. One big parcel owned by one group, or one, one person.
So I think we're going to need a legal opinion, as to whether-
Well, I think it's fairly straightforward, you have basically, it was almost set up, is it, is it one parcel now?
It is one parcel, yes.
Okay, but there's two special permits.
Yes.
In site plans.
We're modifying-
For each one.
For each one.
Well, for, there's two arrays.
Yep.
Right, and there's a spec, there's a site plan and special permit for each one.
Correct.
Right, you are modifying one site plan.
The one that hasn't been built yet.
Right.
But you're also modifying the one that has been built, because you're putting in a different road access.
But we're, so there's a fence right here that closes off this system, and we're adding a road, just like here, we're adding a road to the south of the existing two arrays. So that's where I'm saying I don't see how that could change.
If someone picked up, if someone wanted to look at that, to buy that site later, and said, the first, the site that's been built, and they went to the board, and they pulled up the faces, this isn't what they built out there, the road goes around the, you know?
So-
It's a change.
Yeah, the, the, the first, the Phase One needs a minor modification, or major, we haven't decided that yet. So it seems, we could still vote, again, it would, it would be subject to the Phase One developer coming in and, and requesting a modification, either major or minor. My gut feeling is it's minor, but that's, you know, subject to discussion with the board. It would seem to me, I don't think we should wait to get the Phase One to, to get final vote up or down on Phase Two, that doesn't seem right, but on the same, at the same time, it does seem right that we need to do it properly for Phase One to stay in compliance with our-
With their permits.
With their permits, yeah, yeah.
So I'm just thinking down the road, if, if we go that route, Phase One comes back in to do a modification to their permit for two sections of roadways that aren't access for their, for their existing permit?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, okay.
It, it's a change on the site.
Now is the time to see if anyone from the folks in the public would like to speak, sir.
Hey, Ronald Carr, don't be back in the next one.
Evening.
Woody can tell you all about that, that's the section between first array and second array.
And that's where there's supposed to be a culvert?
Yeah, there ain't nothing there. One side, the water's right up to the level of the road, the other side is virtually going up, because it goes to the north. One side goes to the north, feeds into the Dyton Dam, where they go broke.
Yep.
That's where it starts.
And the water level's lowering now.
Yeah, we have a level one, yeah.
Yeah, on one side.
Right.
If you're going up to that last array, the left side, it's right up to the edge of the road.
Okay.
Kenny saw it, okay? I appreciate Woody coming down, and I really appreciate Ken looking into this, maybe we can help somebody else somewhere down the line, if the town gets together and says, this is what we need to do.
What was the name of that dairy farm across the street?
L.A. Walker Farms.
Walker, L.A. Walker, right.
L.A. Walker Farms.
I couldn't think of the name of the-
These people run about eighty-eight.
Marjorie Walker, that was the-
Marjorie Walker, that's it. She bought the old building that I had, when it was a school.
Right.
She bought that in nineteen thirty-six. My father bought it in nineteen fifty. This here is the entrance, what it looks like. I can't see why the town of Dyton, through the planning board, can't say, hey, you've got to make this look halfway decent, no matter where they're at, I don't care. I'm done, I, I'm almost done down there, because nobody wants to, you know?
I'm guessing, I'm guessing that your position is, this is Phase One, so it's not your concern.
I, I mean, so I wouldn't-
Which is another reason for the Phase One people to come in here-
Yeah.
And request a minor modification.
Exactly right.
And we can hold their feet to the fire.
But this is the first, this is-
You can help hold their feet to the fire.
My position is, how can I help with that? And I, and I called those guys and spoke to them and, and, you know, but-
Because there is, there is other things on that, they want to go around that first array, excuse me.
Yep.
They want to come around this first array, this is all wet down here, this is all wet right here, there's water set underneath the panels right on that corner.
Well, I saw it in the pictures here.
The very last picture, that water's set, been sitting there virtually all summer.
Is there an order of conditions for, for this?
So we're, yes, after, after coming through you, we then go to the Conservation Commission for these same modifications.
In the corner, there's still a ledge, I mean, you walk up there, you walk uphill to get to it, and then it's swampland, starts, works, works into the swampland.
I haven't been out that far.
You've been up there.
And, and, and not as deep as you.
Yeah, but in order for them to get trucks up there, they're, they're coming in 53-foot trailers. They're not coming in on little six-wheelers, they're coming in 53-foot trailers, last time they unloaded them all out in the street.
Because they couldn't get up there.
Because they couldn't get in the, in the yard.
I remember you-
So they blew it all through the wall.
Oh, okay.
Left that to be, they could get the trucks in, they finally got some in at the last end of it. Now, Pete may not agree with me, the more they take off of this, these rocks, the steeper it gets. This used to have dirt on top of it, loom, trees that used to hold the water back. As soon as they took that off, the water all flows this way, from the power lines down, it's downhill. There's a hill over here into the next owner's land, Zasbuila, okay? I'm down here, my house is over here. Down here, there's a, a culvert, they don't show it, there's a brook, that's where all this water comes from, comes to. It all comes down here, and goes down through here, goes under the road. Everybody says, eh, I've talked to other engineers, hot streak, same thing, because we get everything, we're in a funnel down here, we, we gather all the water. Now my driveway, I can't black down it, can't do anything to it, except put stones on it. Because now that they've taken all this top stuff off, I get more water, half, halfway down the hill on my driveway, it starts getting wet. You can see it coming out of the ground, because this is all undergrowth here, trees and stuff, and that brook comes right through, here.
On the order of conditions, we, we should have something on there.
This hasn't done anything really to these boys, because they didn't put this in. This culvert that these trucks are going over right here, and they've been going over it, is nothing but stone, there's no such thing as a culvert on farmland, really. Their culverts were made out of stone. Before this first array, yeah, there's a little hole going underground, Kenny saw it, you can see the water coming out of it, but it's about that big around. And the water comes across me anyway, and goes down, and now, with all this road that they put in, I, I hate to take up any of your times, all the road that they put in is holding more water back, because it used to be open, so it could go flow anyway. So we need a culvert, there's something there to open it up. They need to really check, this really needs to be checked out. And that's one of the spots where, where you're hitting trees on both sides.
Right. Pete, do you recall, do you recall if there was any calculations done to-
Sorry? I mean, were the, from the, from the Conservation Commission concern was, you know, actually maintaining the flows, I mean, and, and you've seen it on a number of these projects, that they want to maintain the flows, they don't want to restrict them, they don't want to increase them, but maintain the existing flow conditions. And that, I believe the calculation demonstrated that they were doing that. Now, has that been effectuated out in the field, is another question.
If this thing is up and running, how did they get the okay to run the system if these things were not done, to, to-
I, I, I think, I believe there is a culvert out there.
A year ago, it wasn't the way it is now, it's a tier.
Well, we all, we signed up for it, yeah.
I believe there is a culvert out, culvert out there, but it's not lodged.
Never to be lodged. Dean Cronin and Dr. Menjy signed, it never went before the board and the town meetings. I thought, after the fact, these people had to write the suit if they didn't get that stuff.
Nice.
But the only thing, Pete, the only thing I know about, why I know so much about this land, 73 years there.
I'm sure.
I've played on it, I've walked through them swamps, and my feet wet more than once, you know? It's nice land, it's nice land, but now it's holding water back on me, and it's raised the water level to a certain point, because they took everything off, and the water comes east, on this side of the power lines. I know you're the engineer, I'm nowhere near one, but I know, I watch where the water goes.
You understand that, it's something we'll have to discuss when we come back there.
I'd love to have you come down and talk with me about it, sure.
What, if the board wants to give a site visit?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. Well-
Once we get probably Project One, and we can do a site-
I'm not against, I'm not against, I'm not against these people at all.
No.
I wasn't from day one, I'd rather see solar panels, I got them on a roofed house, I'd rather have solar panels-
Than houses.
Than seventy-five, a hundred houses. There's eighty acres of land there. There's eighty acres of land there. Some's good, some's bad. And it's been there as long as I can remember and hasn't gone.
So the board wants, I think, once we get a, an application and have a project, the representative of Project One come in and we can do a site visit.
That's fine, because.
And address all these issues.
Mr. Wilson sat right here and back two years ago at a meeting and said, oh yeah, we're gonna take care of everything.
Unfortunately, the, the project.
You know how many times I.
Well, unfortunately, this is one of the ones where a project goes past and someone else takes it over and that's the issue.
And we never could find out who was supposed to follow up and make sure they did things, you know?
They couldn't wait to flip that switch on them.
No.
No, I know. They were, they couldn't wait to flip that switch.
They couldn't even, they, when they drove in the place, they wouldn't even look over the wall, because I was sitting there. I own that building right there that you see.
I own it.
And I'm in that thing. Five, six dollars a day, just messing around. Just stay out of the way here.
So was it your intention to invite them back, or you, you're gonna ask that they come back to you?
I'm going to suggest that a member of the board make a motion. I may as well make that suggestion now unless there's other comments.
I, I just wanna concur with Mr. Cott, that I saw everything he talked about, as well as what he said.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm interested in what they got to say.
My suggestion is that a member of the board make a motion to approve the minor subdivision subject to the following conditions. That the operator or owner attends a pre-construction meeting two weeks prior to the start of construction. That the operator or owner submit to the planning board EPA stormwater pollution plan. That the, before any construction starts, the improvement of the existing condition of the road accessing it. As well as that before any construction starts at Phase Two, the Phase One people come before the board for a minor modification, application, a, application, I'm not saying if it's minor or major, we'll see. And the fifth is that the Phase Two folks get all Conservation Commission approvals before any construction, before our approval is final. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Can I suggest some modifications?
Sure.
Maybe discussion? One, you said subdivision when you first started that.
Did I say subdivision?
Yes, it did.
Site plan.
Okay. Secondly, I don't think you can have a one permit contingent on the attendance of another party. And that proper condition may indicate something that the approval is conditional upon the obtaining of a site plan modification for the Project One solar, to allow the construction of the required access road, to be better worded.
Works for me.
And I don't know if the board wants to consider any potential landscaping or bonds for the project. To discuss.
Well, landscaping would be for Phase One. Because landscaping out, no.
No, no, Phase, do you want any for Phase Two?
Out in the back.
Out in the back, we're talking the back.
Yeah, okay. Do we need any out in the back?
Uh, you may just want some to make sure they clean, do a good job and, you know, clean the place up. It's always harder, you know, if you owe me some money.
Well, there's cleaning the place up landscaping.
Or call it a restor, you know.
Restoration.
Restoration. Site restoration or something. You can call it whatever you want, but it's, it's gotta do what you need.
Maintenance fund, is that?
Yeah, or a maintenance fund, you can have a.
On Phase One or Phase Two?
Phase Two.
So I think both of them are gonna end up with that if we can impose that on, on.
Well, well, but, but we're talking about the conditions for Phase Two.
Right.
Right.
And so the, I can, a condition could be a, a post-construction cleanup bond.
I think if we continued this meeting with these guys, we would be a lot quicker to get Phase One people here.
Well, I think that's a great point, and I, I also would like to review the conditions from the existing permit for Phase Two, because we're, we're proposing a few modifications to it. Um, but conditions on the modification and how they might relate back to what's already there.
Right.
It's probably worth taking two weeks before you meet again. Let's continue.
Let's continue it. No one made that motion. You should rescind your motion.
I'll just vote against it, please.
No, no. There's no vote taken.
No vote.
No, there was no vote.
So would anyone like to ma, make a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue.
On favor.
Uh, to when in, when, when in?
Next meeting.
Two weeks or what?
Well, why don't we try to get Phase One people in here?
You can't, you.
Yeah.
You can't make them get Phase One people in here.
Well, I have a, I have a contact with them and I've, I've passed it along. I mean, I've talked to them three or four times since I last saw you, so. Um, when is your next meeting? You said the next?
We have a meeting scheduled for February sixth, or February twentieth.
I swear, something came up today on February sixth, but I can't remember. We'll, we'll, February sixth is okay.
We're late, we're late, we're late.
You wanna do February sixth, yeah.
Yes.
Take it down.
Yeah.
Please, go.
The sixth?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Six o'clock.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Six o'clock.
It starts at six. I have a couple items, uh, prior to, so I'm gonna say, let's say about six thirty.
I guess, last, last question while we're here tonight, are there any other items that we, we wanna talk about related to this project?
What's that?
You kind of, kind of think through the last one we approved, anything you might, you wanna bring up to them now so that they consider the possibilities?
Well, in the, the last one, there was a performance bond for drainage. There was a, a bond for landscaping. And there was an additional lan, it, there was, it wasn't a bond, but the.
Kerry, could, if I suggest, Kerry, give us a copy of the decision?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's actually right in the, the signature folder, right in the blue one.
But he's not gonna sit here reading it.
No, but I was just gonna.
Make a copy.
You want just the, you want me to provide a copy or just list off? You want just the conditions or?
Yeah, the conditions, yeah.
So while she's doing that, I guess my question is, is there anything else that we need to talk about separate of this issue which we've just started covering? Or is this based off your letter, the fire chief kind of giving the, the sign off on everything else we've talked about over the last month? Is this all that's left? I just wanna confirm now, from an engineering standpoint.
You know, that additional access road and, and that drainage, I don't think I received calculations on that, but that really should come in under Project One.
Obviously, the fire chief did not take a ride up there, he just looked at your map. All right, I'm sure, 'cause he's got a brand of seventy thousand dollar vehicle. He wasn't driving it through there. I guarantee you. I, I'm kinda concerned about that road going around the, the arrays there, is that?
This one right here?
Yeah. Can trucks actually go around that?
Yeah, when, when we're, when we build it the way we proposed, proposed it, yeah, fourteen feet wide gravel road.
Thirty foot.
Radius, what are the?
Thirty foot radius?
What are the radius, thirty?
I don't have them, but I, I thought you guys covered that, you and Dave Albrecht. Or maybe that was covered, maybe that was covered with the fire chief? There, I read something about a radius.
I did not review those.
I, I thought it was a thirty foot radius, if I remember correctly. No, that, it should be.
Yeah, I, I didn't know you weren't, this isn't it right there.
It's in here, it's in here, but I just.
There is no radius on the plan, but I, at least I didn't see it.
Thank you.
So obviously, this is what applied to some of them.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
This is one of the.
Forty-five and thirty.
Forty-five on the inside.
And.
Yeah, for another project.
For another project, but they did. And so in particular, they're really talking about things like this.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's not to say that they have to do the same thing on that, because that's way out back as I would.
Yep, that makes, that makes sense, I guess, but I'm confused. Yep, I guess what I'm confused is because we already have a permit with our order of conditions.
Yeah.
For this project, so does all that go back up with this minor modification?
No one out there.
Yeah, they, what they might do is, they're gonna make their decision.
You can't tell.
Uh, based on.
Change from what it is now, because it's already.
They can kind of pull in any other conditions, even if they're not related to water change.
Yeah, well, I think because of, of some of the problems that they have there, like the problems with the drainage and stuff.
Yeah.
They wanna see that next, because they don't, because the problems that exist in them.
Yeah.
They see what's going on, they don't wanna tap on more problems.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
They're trying to protect that.
Yeah, I think, because what I wanna do, if the other group's coming back in, I wanna make sure the site's ready for us when we show up. And then we'll make whatever issues we're able to improve.
Right. Now, this is like one of those special circumstances.
We'll have to talk through it a little bit.
Yes, yes, most definitely.
Okay.
We'll see.
Okay, I think I'm straight up.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more?
Oh, sorry.
Dinner night, like, something sexy.
Yeah, no.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Edward Phipps, here to discuss potential marijuana cultivation location. Don't get your stand.
This guy's not hiding anything. He puts his, he's doing it out in there, everything.
Thank you.
Got a few materials in it? No, you already have it put it out, so, but. Are there any marijuana? No, no.
What do you look, a handout show?
Yeah.
Uh, I have one.
Yeah, but okay, absolutely. Is these two, just to get on the same page, the plot of land, if you guys would like?
I actually carry my stuff.
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I kinda snuck over.
She used to sit over here, but I didn't take a shower today, so she didn't.
Yeah, that's not true. Was I still?
Okay, great.
You wanna knock over this?
Yes, I can.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I'm Edward Phipps, this is Derek Erickson, um, we're both managing members of Cedar Soul. Um, just give a little background about us. We, uh, operate a fifty-five hundred square foot commercial facility under the medical marijuana program in Casco, Maine. Uh, been doing that for about six years now. Um, we maintain a strong focus on growing in a very environmentally, environmentally friendly way. Um, and with very quiet and responsible. Uh, we've been, um, developing techniques where we don't have to use chemicals which are often harmful to the products, consumers, and ecosystem around the building. Um, for quite some time now, we've been looking to expand into Massachusetts and get started down here. Been looking for a municipality, uh, that fits us, and looking for a municipality where we fit them as well. Uh, that search has brought us to Dyton. Uh, we've done a great field from the town. Honestly reminds us a lot of Casco, Maine, where we're up right now, where we're at right now, farming community, very small. Um, everyone we've dealt with has been very approachable and wonderful. And so, uh, that brings us to, uh, the lands we are looking at currently. So we've been trying to speak with owners of land. We got hold of someone that is certainly willing to part with some land. Uh, he owns quite a few, uh, uh, sites. Um, I'm willing to part with it under the condition that town is okay with us being there, of course. Uh, so that brings us to, um, you know, we, we reached out to him, and he owns, from my understanding, I don't know which, obviously there's a lot of houses there. Um, he owns quite a few plots here that are zoned industrial. I know the town just recently expanded to include industrial as far as the overlay district is concerned. Um, but after driving down this neighborhood and considering those plots of land, they're just very close to residential housing. And that's our first priority is, of course, to not impose or intrude on residences. Um, we can operate in a way that's extremely invisible. Our facility in Casco is right on the main road. Uh, residences are right there, hotels, hotels right next door, never had a complaint, but still understanding, building a structure. Uh, we certainly don't want to just kind of attempt to throw that up right near anyone else's.
Could it be that people are happy all the time?
But most certainly, you know, as well as just, you know, those plots of land, uh, they're very small. We're not looking to build anything extravagant, twelve thousand square feet, it's approximately double we have now, a little bit more. Uh, looking to make sure that we're able to, you know, take it one step at a time and not do anything too huge. Relative to many other cultivation facilities, usually they're about twenty thousand square feet plus. Um, but still, needs buffers, needs land, needs a parking lot. And so you have this tremendous amount of land left of what immediately abuts the zoning, and that's what we're looking at strongly. Um, that gives us and the town the ability to choose an area to put us that suits both the town and us as well. Um, we're open to suggestions as far as where to build, uh, with regards to that land. Uh, it gives us the ability to be set back away from residents, um, like I said, be virtually invisible. Uh, there's a, a lot of that land is very buildable, not many wetlands at all, except for the western side.
What, what's the scale of this?
Uh, approximately thirty-six acres.
No, no, is it an inch to a, to forty feet is the scale?
I, I don't, I'm sorry.
'Cause I don't know if, if these folks on Center Street are fifty feet from the middle or five hundred feet from the middle.
Fair enough. I failed to include the scale, I apologize. Yeah.
And this green part is, is a proposed subdivision? It's not?
It's, it's, so from my understanding, um, that was supposed to be an extension of the subdivision that was, uh, inclusive, that is in the industrial zoning at the moment. Um, but the owner said he doesn't intend to continue that. Um, I'm simply regurgitating what he had told me.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, from my understanding, that was supposed to be a continuation that he's not planning on, uh, continuing on with.
Okay.
So that's, that's the Stonegate, Jeff, of forty.
Right.
Yeah, we're forty B.
Can I, uh, speak on that, as the former chairman of the zoning board appeals on his, uh, selectmen? That he would have to federate, would have to go to the zoning board to get a modification in that forty, on that comprehensive permit. It can't just be, he can't just say, I'm not gonna do Phase Two. He's gotta go and get a modification. And then obviously, it's gonna be, they don't wanna overlay, it's gonna be approved by the townspeople.
In addition, this is not zoned for industrial.
It's not, yes.
So we require a, a, a town, a war, a warrant on the, on the town meeting and a vote by the town to rezone it for industrial use.
Well, I was also, uh, going, trying to gauge the potential for variance as well.
Variance is, doesn't matter. Variance is, the ZBA can give a variance for dimensions.
Yep.
But they don't give a variance for use, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. But they have to be approved by the town, that have to be designated that area.
Yeah, so it, it would have to be rezoned.
Yep.
So there are areas in town that are zoned industrial. So the neighbors can't complain about a rezoning, 'cause it's already zoned industrial.
Fair enough.
If I were a neighbor and someone wanted to rezone the land in the back of my house, I would say, well, you say you're gonna put a very quiet twenty thousand, twelve thousand square foot, uh, growing facility out there, but who's to say that you're not gonna put a scrap metal recycling plant out there? Because now it's rezoned for, for industrial and it's this huge lot, and there's a multiple number of uses that can be there, I think you got an uphill battle there.
Okay.
And I think you have some weapons.
Well, I, I know there are, there are some weapons there, but, uh, there's, there's, there's enough acreage where we could certainly find a place to be, from my understanding anyways.
And the people in, the people in Stonegate Landing are gonna complain, we don't want an industrial zone back there because all these industrial type trucks are gonna be driving back and forth in this new industrial zone, so we're gonna vote against the two.
And there would just be a grow facility?
Just cultivation, no retail at all. Yeah, and I certainly understand the uphill battle and, you know, this is very informal and we're just gonna get a gauge on things, understanding the town's.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that you shouldn't fight the battle, but the first thing would be to get the, for a rezoning, a warrant. Is something that the, either the planning board proposes, or it can be proposed by.
Petition of the citizens.
Petition, yes, that's right, that's the word I was looking for. So, um, I know that there is other industrial zoning that you should look at, this is my opinion.
Yeah, we have, we've attempted, we haven't found much, to be quite honest with you. And this, the great amount of acreage and the direction it goes in as far as it's getting away from a lot of housing, a lot of areas and a lot of roads and businesses, I mean, I know not to a great extent, but certainly there's a lot of options here as far as where to build that seem to be the most attractive and most readily available. It's honestly the first product, uh, first landowner we've been able to get in touch with that's open to selling the land.
And this, I know that the, there's a, a half-empty, uh, factory building on the north side of town that's zoned industrial as well.
Okay.
And that there's also a, used to be this huge factory that they tore down that's. And that there's also a, used to be this huge factory that they tore down that's still industrial, they tore it down because they couldn't find a use for it. So, I suggest that, that you go speak to those folks because.
Have you talked to them?
Have not.
Cause again, it's a, it's a huge expansive concrete, formerly a factory.
Four twenty Spring Street.
Okay, very good to know, appreciate that.
And I think it's over millions.
And it, has it already been approved, I think, of?
No.
It's been rezoned.
They didn't want, no, they didn't want it, that's the.
It's not, it's not overlay district.
It's, it's zoned industrial.
Industrial, yes, but we don't have a, uh.
In an industrial zone, according to our new bylaw, you can have a grow facility.
You just can't have a dispensary.
Right.
Right, no retail, which we have no intention of doing in Dayton.
But it's as of right, which is a less of a battle than, than what we're talking about.
He's gonna wanna rent you more square footage than you're looking for.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's another part of the equation for sure, and we're looking to buy, um, you know, that's, that's something we're very keen.
You know, look into it.
Oh, the whole place is for sale.
Alright, fair enough, yeah, we'll certainly look into it, I appreciate that a great deal.
What's the name of, Mr. Merrigan's company, the Torres Group?
Torres.
Torres.
Torres and like the ball and the bowl, not like.
DAU.
Yeah.
Four twenty Spring Street, it's a big mill. Very nice man, his name is Mr. Merrigan, I don't know his first name, but.
Okay.
Peter Merrigan. I think it's at least happened.
Okay.
And that, that excludes all the acreage that used to be a factory that was torn down.
Gotcha, alright, very good to know, good to know, appreciate that.
I don't know if they, if they drew the line at tearing down because it was a separate parcel or, but look at our, at our town planning GIS website, you can see exactly what parcels are there.
Okay, it's four twenty Spring Street, you said?
Yeah.
Six, six.
Six, four, six twenty?
He's thinking four twenty for us.
What happened?
That's his house address. No pun intended.
Um, we certainly will look into that, of course, and not to, 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 we're not gonna rule that out, um, but just while we're here, just in case that doesn't work out, um, the next, if we were to get this, try to get this rezoned, we would simply, we would just apply for that and.
It would be a problem.
It would be a problem.
You, well, okay.
Yeah, you know, it's, I've been looking for that.
This board would, would, or, uh, uh, citizens would petition, but this board would either craft a warrant for the spring town meeting or the fall special meeting, depending on the timelines. And I think we're getting real tied up upon the spring meeting, yeah? I don't even know if there's enough time because of all the publishing. So, if this board decided it was in the town's interest as the planning board to rezone that, then we would propose a warrant on the town meeting for, for the spring town meeting in June.
Yes, they are.
The other, the other thing that there is here is that you gotta be at least a hundred feet away from residential lots.
Right.
If, if, we don't, no, if it was approved, then that would be another battle that you would have.
I see.
And again, and there's no scale here, but I know there's a school here.
Right, yeah, I did measure, um, it's roughly fifteen hundred feet away, roughly, um, you know, I understand still, it's more than a thousand feet, but the proximity.
All of these lots, all of these lots that are bought this, you'd have to be a hundred feet away from that as well for the area that it's in.
Right, right.
It's a big, big battle that you're gonna have on your hands.
But before you even got to that battle, you'd have to persuade this board that it was in the best interest of the town to rezone that particular parcel for industrial use. And because of the things that I just talked about, I think that that would be an uphill battle in and of itself, although I only speak for myself.
Fair enough, well, I appreciate the honesty, um, I don't wanna take too much more of your time, but if we were able to work something out with another parcel land that's already zoned, just while we're here, is there anything other concerns the board might have relative to the special permit part of the application? Or just in terms of this kind of business coming to town or, or applying into town, I should say?
I think it's a very straightforward process, um, although it's new to everyone on this board as well as the whole town, so there will be some, there'll be a learning curve about, about how to go about it. But it was this board that, uh, created the bylaws for recreational and medical bylaw, uh, medical use. And it was this board that, that proposed and successfully got the industrial zone rezoned to allow for cultivation. So, I think this board is, is very proactive in getting business into this town.
Okay.
So, I don't think that you would, you would, I don't think you'd find roadblocks amongst this board to, uh, to get a cultivation facility. Depending on where the location is, the roadblocks may come from other sources. Or not at all.
Okay.
As you suggested, also, you don't forget you have to change the, um, chapter forty B permit for that property as a, you know, simultaneous test.
Yep, aware, okay, um, well, thank you so much, really appreciate it, and, uh, hopefully we'll be back.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda, our favorite.
God, there we go.
Favorite piece of land in the world, the entire world is, uh.
Oh, me.
Center, Gumpersie, Center Woods, Maris Lane.
Miss me.
And happy new year to you.
Yes. I did not mean to come off, I, we, Kelly had to have her hip replaced, I'm tired, so I've been trying to deal with that, I've been home. And he put me over the edge yesterday.
No, home you needed.
Done.
No.
Craig cannot come tonight, he sends his regards.
Regrets already gone.
So, I said, I don't wanna go by myself, and he said, you gotta go, I said, there I am. So, you, um, I'm at a loss for what exactly is going on with cleaning out the drain pipes and putting in the silt bags. So, um, a couple weeks back, the front of the property where the bridge is, the silt bags were replaced and thrown on the side of the road, the dirty ones. And Matt, the one that owns the properties, the other properties, came and cleaned it up, which was really nice.
Matt?
Matt Weintrug.
One who is trying to get buildings.
New Matt.
New Matt.
Oh, that's the new Matt, not the old Matt.
Old Matt left the, left.
Old Matt left, left the mats.
And, um, new Matt came and he did clean up. And then yesterday, old Matt showed up and with two guys and put in three bags in front of my house. Cause he went, we texted him and said, why didn't you finish? And he said that they were out of bags. So, I guess there's only one place that sells silt bags in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, cause they're out of them, so they're on order. So, then he put them in around the cul-de-sac, but didn't clean out anything. So, my question to everyone was, w- what's the sense in it? If you're not gonna clean out the pipes and you put the silt bags on top, you still haven't fixed the problem.
Stopping from additional silt getting into the pipes.
So, his response to that was, um. That, uh, we bought every silt set that the supply house had, we will install the last one as soon as it comes in. Cleaning the drains requires a special machine, that will be done when all the houses are complete and just before the road is turned over to the town. So.
I believe that he's mistaken there because we've discussed it as, we won't issue any permits until it's up to where it's supposed to be.
So, when I looked back in the cost to complete, it is not in the cost to complete hiring a truck to come and clean the drains. So, again, when hand it's.
But that cleaning the drains is in the cost to complete.
I looked at it, I mean, he's, is it fifty dollars for twenty-one drains, is that? What?
Oh, no.
That's what was on here.
Fifty dollars an hour. I was gonna say, yeah, at least. I'll get this thing better weekly for me.
So, maybe we were mistaken on the cost to complete cleaning out all the drains, and if that's so, I just want it in somewhere. Cause I don't trust him even a little bit. But it was really funny that two guys had to come and lift up the drains so they could put the silt bag in.
You know, to say, do you think, I mean, some, it, sometime, the drain, have the, the, you're talking about the catch basins.
No, no, I just mean, he put the two front ones in, but then he had to bring people in to put the other ones in, so it's three people doing that. Yeah.
Let's just hope he does it.
I, I agree, but, so, that's my question, is it in the cost to complete? If it is, great, if it's not?
If it isn't, we'll amend it so that it is.
Because I don't, I, first of all, drainage has been a big issue, so why it's not, what's the difference between cleaning the drains now and putting the silt bags in? Than waiting for all these houses that are never gonna be built to be built? That's just one of my questions, because we're the ones dealing with all the drainage issues.
That wasn't the agreement anyway, the agreement was that he was to do it before any building permits were gonna be issued.
And none of them been issued.
None have been issued, so.
So, um, I'm just, wanted to clarify where this was going.
Well, there's always the final cleaning of the drains, I mean, that's, you know, the contractors typically don't come in and clean the drain lines until everything is completed. Unless it's not functioning, I mean, the catch basins are designed.
Which is the issue, yeah.
Well, I, 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 I'll, I'll have to discuss this with Matt, I'm sorry, I didn't know this was gonna be a major thing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But, I mean, the, the, the some, catch basins have a forty-two inch sum.
Right.
So, they accumulate sediments and still fu- function properly. And it's, there's, there's like, they fill up about two feet of soil that they need to be.
So, yeah, towns clean them every year.
Right.
And this project has been there for many years and probably has never.
And there were never any silt bags in the, the drains in front of my property.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't need to have been an interim cleaning if it had been built in a timely basis.
Or if the silt bags have been put in.
But I'm just saying that as a, Joe bystander, not bystander, but not as an expert, so, maybe you can talk to Matt and see what, uh, what he thinks and what has been done.
I have it right here, Ken. So, in the cost to.
It's just taken so long that I don't even remember all the different steps and who's doing what, when they are, and who's who, and who's Matt is who, and it's just, uh.
I mean, the focus is, let's, I mean, the first focus, that's just to get, address all those drainage issues.
Yeah.
And get that, and then catch up with all the other things too.
Right, but if, but if the cleaning is part of the drainage issues, it has to be addressed thoroughly.
So, it does say here to clean out drainage structures, twenty-one quantity, fifty dollars each. So, are there twenty-one, I'm, I'm very confused.
I believe there's probably twenty-one structures that need to be cleaned out, and that comes with a special back, which.
Yeah, it's a truck that has like a scoop in it.
I just, I.
It's got a scoop they use for.
I'm just making sure.
Is it vacuum? Oh, I'm talking about the town of Dayton, it's got a scoop.
Yeah, they do a special scoop there.
And they bought the guy, bought it from the guy that used to, used to do it under contract from the town.
I'm just making sure that this is.
Maybe you donated it to him. That's an old piece of junk. So, yeah, vacuum is a much better way to go, and it, it may only cost fifty dollars to go in there with a, with a big ass, a high-pressure vacuum. Fifty bucks, next one, I mean, so it's not.
And that's fine, I just, you know what, I just, every time he walks in the neighborhood, some, something.
Your hair stands on end and all that, right?
And again, I just wanna make sure that it's done the right way. So, it's Craig, who continues to have an ice skating rink outside his house, and we're all for getting these building permits done. I, I just wanna make sure at the end of this, everything that is supposed to be done gets done, and so.
Separate site cleanup, the, the silt sacks and the catch basins.
So, he'll put new ones in, is that what that means?
The silt, the silt sacks and the catch basins are gonna be pulled at the end of the job.
Okay.
But they just need to be in there during, uh, when is, uh, unstable surfaces.
Well, they haven't been there in four years.
Well, they should have.
So, all of the goop that has gone into those drains.
Can probably wash down a lot of money to the detention basin which he's had to clean out.
Could there, could there also been, uh, over the years when they plowed, that they ripped them right out as well? I mean, I, I'm not trying to.
We never had, we never did, but there, there obviously were at the beginning of the property because they were taken out and just left to the side of the road. So, they were.
I'm just, I'm just trying to come up with the benefit of the doubt.
So, we're just missing one in the front of our house, but it's on order, but, so that is in the finishing?
Yes.
Okay.
That's because they love, he loves you and he made sure to leave it there, so.
That's how videotaping.
Sorry, we'll be taped there too, so.
I'm done caring about being taped for him, um, I just, that's, so we're just here every time he went enters to make sure that at the end of this, that this work gets done. Because I question whether it will.
That's, that's your right, and it's our right not to give permits until it is.
Okay.
It is certainly helpful for you.
The fence looks really nice that around the retention model, it's great, yep.
So, it's helpful.
The little grate on the pipe looks nice too.
Yeah.
Be great, yeah.
Thank you. So, thank you for seeing me, I just wanted to make sure that that was in that.
I will talk down, discuss this with Matt.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's because there is another email right after this saying that Matt Antonio, right, old Matt.
Old Matt.
Old Matt is saying that he's all done and he's ready for GZA Matt to go out and do another inspection.
Well, he's not all done because there's not a silt set.
So, well, now there's that issue, so you, yeah.
Yeah. That's Matt G.
Yeah, Matt G, um, yes, so, and I didn't, I didn't, that was this, uh, this afternoon before I left. And I knew we were discussing this tonight, so I figured I wasn't gonna say anything until we figured out what was gonna go on here.
And you got a new homeowners association paperwork?
No.
Oh.
That is one of the terms of the.
Have you?
Guys, don't know anything about it.
So, I called an attorney out of Boston and, um, he wanted two thousand dollars just to sit down and talk with us, to talk to me. And so, I talked to the neighbors and we really feel like if. If we're gonna do homeowner's problem, it should be the nine homes so, to split the cost rather than the four homes that have been sitting here dealing with this. So, we are going to not do anything, um, because we have a homeowners association paper.
And that's the one with thirty dollars?
Mm-hmm.
I think you guys should stick to that.
Well, well, that's the paperwork, that's the paperwork we signed, so I guess all the newer neighbors will have a different one?
See how far that goes. If that ever comes about.
Well, there won't be any newer neighbors if it doesn't come about, will there?
So, I did consult, um, the attorneys, an attorney, and he was very nice, but he said it's gonna be hours worth of work to research where this all went down. How this whole disaster.
Now, if it snows, are they gonna plow?
Um, the town has been plowing for us.
And we build.
Mr. Ferry's very nice, he plows.
Yeah, we build.
Yep, it's been beautiful, even on the ice, one icy day, Dayton roads are always spectacular, so.
Don't say it so loud, he might hear it. Yeah, they're not as good as they used to be.
It's on record.
Oh, so, go to Rehoboth on a snowy day.
Or you just go to Berkeley on the way to the highway.
Like this, driving through Rehoboth, like, oh my god.
I just said that because we're on camera.
So, you don't have a homeowner.
Okay.
I actually got a response back.
I guess, uh. The rest of the stuff, you don't really have to stick around.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Unless you want to, you're, you're welcome to stick around for a.
Well, do you want my input on some of it?
Budget.
Yeah, the, no, the, the review fees.
Yeah.
The review, yes, wow.
So, I'll, I'll need to get back to you on that.
Yes, which actually, that was the next thing that was on our schedule, I was going to try and call around to various towns today and get their, their fees. Because the last time our fees were looked at, actually, it looks like the last time our fees were updated was in two thousand eleven, so I thought it was time to. Take a look at those, I was gonna, I was gonna try and get, um, some surrounding town fees, what they were.
Does that have to go before the town meeting?
We have to have a hearing, we have to have a hearing, we don't have to have a town meeting. Uh, it's under our rules and regs, so you just have to have a public hearing and, uh, proper, um.
Notice.
Right, you just have to read it like a couple times to the town and then post it.
Okay, alright, fair enough.
Um, so I haven't had a chance to do that, so I'm coinciding with you, if you don't mind, just taking a look at those fees so that we can get those.
Sure.
Updated.
Then you can get back to me what you see, what they're charging for review fee, review fees in other towns.
It's, I'm gonna do that as well, it's actually, it's been, you know, what I've been doing is just going online, most of them post them online, so it's not easy.
Yeah, so I think that's the easiest thing to do.
That's the, that's the easiest way that I've been doing.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Um, so, yeah, that would be great, thank you.
So, why don't you, when you come up the number you think you're gonna be going, we'll just run it by me and see if it works for us.
Okay. See if that works, okay. See if that works, okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, I'd rather have you suggest something to us than us kind of.
Okay.
But, if you need help with it, we can help you too.
Yeah. That'd be great, I just didn't wanna be really out of the ballpark.
So if Peter's um uh fees go to half of what he charged us, well, it's okay with that.
Oh, so.
I love that, I love to do that.
I know you do.
So, and as you know, we're at budget time.
Yes.
So, um, I have gone through the budget, because we need to vote on the budgets, and it has to be submitted by the end of the month.
Okay.
So if you just wanted to take a quick look at it.
We have to make the vote tonight.
Yes, we do.
Good night, all.
So, good night, thank you here.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so I did a couple of the standard, um some of the standard stuff, it's pretty simple, I do have a package in there for each of you.
Okay.
So, right there, and it's just her memo, basically, basically.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so on your budget sheets, and you'll have to forget the very fine print, I tried to get it.
That's the last page of this?
Yeah, that really big page with the really small print, so.
Not this one?
Nope, so the big, so the budget, the first one is that one right there, Peter, that big one.
This one here? Oh, okay, playing, yeah.
So as you'll see right there, um, I was assuming that your stipends, you were gonna ask for the two percent increase for each of you.
Yep.
Um, just want you guys to be aware that in order to do that, someone from the board does have to appear before the board of selectmen and respectfully request before the end of the month, okay?
I did that last year.
So, in doing that, um, there is a calendar that is um posted in Mallory's office, and I would be more than happy to go with whoever's designated, I'm assuming maybe you.
Yeah.
Um, I can let you know what some of the available dates are.
Yeah, just email me.
And I can, um, we can sit down with her and go over that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, my salary increase, um, is noted with the two percent increase, the sickly bonus, educational bonus, and longevity step. Um, it's broken down, there is another memo or an email from Jen, um, that gives you the exact breakdown, and she confirmed the numbers on that. So that gives you that. Um, let's see, sorry, and then after that the, I didn't do any increase for overtime, I don't get overtime, I'm twenty-nine hours. Overtime is when you go past thirty-two hours.
Yeah, you just take comp time, huh?
Or thirty-five, and I take comp time, so they do have a thousand dollars in there, because when you do the comp times, and I just have yet to figure out the whole thing, but when you do the comp time, somehow it turns into overtime, so it's like pennies, so I just level funded that, and then the clothing allowance level funded that because that's under contract. Um, so then after that, the professional technical line, as you'll note, we originally had a budget of fifteen thousand five hundred. My suggestion was to increase it to twenty, because we use that for town council or council fees. We've been utilizing council more.
Right.
Um, a lot, a lot more uh for review of findings and decisions and to make sure that we're in compliance, so I wanna make sure that we have enough money in there.
Town.
Um, this is stuff that I've discussed with Mallory already, so she's well aware.
Yeah. That makes sense to me.
So, communications, I kept it the same, public hearings, I kept it the same, office supplies, I did bring that up to a thousand, because I wanna get a couple more map archive boxes.
Mm-hmm.
So I can get this office um organized. Um, and then the serpent amount, the serpent assessment, I gave them a call yesterday. Um, there, right now, that increase is a proposed increase, when I spoke to them, they were having a meeting, I think they said tonight, that they were proposing to do a two-and-a-half increase, which is their maximum increase that they were asking for. Um, and that's what they were proposing to do, they were supposed to make a vote tonight, or at least this week during their meeting. If the vote.
Their board, board meeting?
Their board meeting, I think it was there before their.
The monthly meeting is next Wednesday.
Is next Wednesday, so they'll probably present it at that time.
Yeah, probably.
On what their vote is gonna be.
Yep.
Um, she said if it wasn't gonna be approved, then it was gonna be level funded, so I put the increase in there just in case. And that's it on that part. So, um, yeah. So if you're okay, or if you wanna make any changes.
Any changes?
Or if you have any issues, questions, concerns.
Looks good. And then I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget as presented.
I'll make the motion to accept the mo- the budget as presented.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, if you don't mind just signing this, gentlemen, I'll just have you go down the line. So then, I have a couple more budget things, so not, not that easy.
Okay.
The other thing we have is, we have to submit um local receipts, so basically, these that we receive, we have to submit an estimate. Very difficult for me, very difficult for a planning board, because you don't know how many are gonna come, so, but she wants us to be very conservative, so that's what I've tried to do. So, in my estimate, I submitted uh for special permits, I estimated, and like I said, I kept it very low.
You didn't have to give me that ten minutes?
So. Um, I submitted, like, so for example, special permit, I'm estimating twenty-five hundred dollars, that gives you about two special permits and one modification for the year.
Carrie, do you want me to just sign anywhere?
Right. Just sign right under where I put um that motion, and then you're fine. Um, site plan reviews, I estimated at least one large site plan review and one small site plan review. Um, I said nothing for a subdivision or preliminary subdivision. I g- I can't, I, it's hard to determine that.
I don't know, I don't know.
Um, I did do a modification of approval, so a modification, my thought is maybe a modification of maybe uh silver?
Silver, yeah.
A modification of any um subdivision that we have, so I estimated two, so I estimated a thousand on that, and for formas, I estimated about eight for the fiscal year, um, and I estimated about, so I estimated eight for the year. Um, and that's only with one lot, so one forming lot, and so I was being, again, very conservative, so that way.
What about the uh, the retreat lots?
Retreat lots goes under, that goes under a special permit and a formay, so that would fall under the special permit part.
Their thousand-dollar application. Oh, okay.
So this way, since I'm, I'm bidding low.
Being conservative, yeah, yeah.
If we go really high.
Yeah.
It'll be better, and I'm also thinking this, um I'm really not thinking of any of the marijuana stuff that's coming in either, so if we get any, if we.
It may take a year, it may take for the next fiscal year before an a half.
Yeah. And that's the other thought, I was like, I started thinking, well, maybe I should start building that in, and I'm like, well. I don't even think we're anywhere near there yet.
I'm gonna be making it up.
So, if you're okay with that, I need a vote on that as well.
Okay. And I'd like to make a motion to accept this revenue estimate for fiscal year twenty.
So move.
Take it.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Okay, and I'm gonna have you pass these down and sign them, okay? Next, um, Mallory has suggested that I put in for a special art- article for a plan copier this year, so.
Plan copier?
Plan copier.
Full size.
The whole-size plan copier scanner.
So, preparing everything into PDFs.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Wouldn't that be lovely?
Um, so I called Crystal Burns, um, who actually handles state contract for um Massachusetts for copiers.
Word book.
Um, she provided a quote of eight thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars.
On the lease.
Um, she did not suggest a lease, um, she, they do a lease upstairs, we didn't really talk about a lease, um.
The only thing is if we own it, if something goes on it, every big guy is the ones that.
We own it.
Do you know what the, what the lease cost is?
The lease, she did not give me a lease cost, she just gave me the.
It's a thousand dollars a month, doesn't make sense.
I can ask.
If it's five hundred a month, it makes a lot of s- no, it doesn't, because six, eight thousand, you said?
It does. Yeah.
Eight thousand on, six thousand on lease?
Three-year lease, that if it comes out to ten thousand over three years, it's probably worth a lot.
Yeah, two thousand.
But if it's, no, no, if you.
It's five hundred a month?
No, but if, I'm, I'd throw that five hundred a month up, if it costs eight, eight thousand to buy, but we could lease it over three years and it costs ten thousand over the three years, then it might be a good idea, because in year three, we might be uh, might be getting a lot of repairs done.
I'll, I'll.
Hmm.
I may be wrong, I don't know, I don't know how long these things last.
Right.
Can you look on eBay if, if they're used, I mean, I don't know.
I d- I did do a little searching, I'm not too familiar with them, um, so that's why I had her come in.
Yeah.
Um, she didn't offer a lease, I can ask her, um, and certainly go that route.
If we leased, I, if I recall, we used to lease our, our uh, our copiers before.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if that one's still under a lease or if that's purchased, but.
This one's purchased.
Yeah, that one's purchased, I know we did a lot of leasing in the past.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
With uh, the, on Broadway and town, I can't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Edron?
What's that?
Was it Edron?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was that.
Yeah.
Edron.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And all the people.
Mm-hmm. So.
Yeah, do a little more research.
Okay.
See what, get three estimates for, for both purchase and lease.
Is this?
That's the one that she proposes.
This the number? I'm gonna be meeting with Edron in a little while, I'm very, very familiar with this.
Okay. Okay.
And uh, I'll ask him if he has any connections to anybody that's.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it might make sense to buy, but I don't know if they break down as much as everything else, you know, seems these days.
Yeah. Right, yeah, sometimes they kind of, mm, okay.
Or, maybe they have a lease to purchase, where you can pay for it over
A period of time.
three years, at the end of the three years, you own it, and maybe that already fits within our budget that we have, for all I know.
Yeah, not to buy it. Right, that's true.
And at the same time, if there's a preventive maintenance um program, or that they may have.
Yeah, or if you can buy it for eight thousand, or, or nine thousand for a five-year warranty.
Right, she did full coverage service eighty-seven fifty, okay, so it's eighty-eight sixty-seven for the purchase price, and then per month, you get full coverage service for eighty-seven fifty per month. Includes all parts, waste tank, labor, developer, includes up to two thousand six hundred square feet per month, I think that's the paper. Um, and supplies.
For how long?
And it's a color.
Two thousand six hundred square feet of paper.
Paper.
That's what they mean, that's not, that's not a lot, that would, it's a lot of square footage, but when you, when you start with.
Yeah, when you start doing plant, yes, that's not a lot.
A thousand pages?
It's a lot of trees, yeah.
That's a lot of trees, so.
Just, just remember, a thousand pages, there goes, uh, well, it takes my eleven, that's a thousand square feet, well, I'm old as that, huh?
Yeah.
A thousand square feet. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll do a little more digging and find out about the lease, the lease options as well.
Serious.
Last but not least, as you know, I've been doing some purging and and um cleaning and organizing, and when I was going through the closet, I came across two and a half boxes of cassette tapes of meeting minutes that have not been transcribed or typed, which need to be done. So, in light of that, and in speaking to Mallory, Mallory.
There goes your overtime in that line.
There you go.
As much as I would love that. Um, it's talking to Mallory, uh, we were going back and forth about it, and she um suggested they have an internship program, and she suggested utilizing that.
Yeah.
So, she suggested that I present to you, um, doing, utilizing the internship program, and having a student that's like doing either the government services or public speaking, or s- not public speaking, but public.
Communications.
Communications, that type of thing. I was estimating, and I wanted to start off a small, uh, just to see how it goes, and it would be a college student or a student that would be coming during summer break, spring break, Christmas break, and my thought is three hours, three times a week is more than enough, because sitting with headphones, listening to videotapes.
It's gonna get monotonous.
Yes, I think.
We gotta create a budget finish?
I think, yes, there has a budget, so the budget that I worked out, um, it worked out to about twelve hours uh, no, I'm sorry, nine hours per week at twelve dollars per hour, because it's the minimum wage, and I only did it for this fiscal year, when you hit the fiscal year for the following fiscal, um, let's see, January first of two thousand twenty, the um, minimum wage goes up to twelve seventy-five. So my thought is, let's just do before January first, two thousand twenty, just see how it goes, and then reevaluate at the end. That's my proposal, so when I worked out the numbers, I came up with about, um I estimated about fifteen weeks, give or take, between summer vacation, spring vacation, Christmas vacation, um, you know, some of those college breaks or whatever that you have, so I just estimated about fifteen weeks at a hundred and eight dollars per week, that came out to one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. It's a non-benefited, obviously, it's a non-bedif- benefited, it's just straight pay.
Right. Why can't we just round that off with two thousand, just in case? Or am I creating one?
Yeah.
Okay, leave it like it is.
Yeah. They like low numbers, they like to keep it low.
Yeah, so do I, but.
So, um, if, if you're, sorry, yeah, I don't understand either, um, so if, if you're on board, I would need a vote for that as well and signature, or if you have any questions, concerns, or maybe a look into that.
We can make a motion to accept the new intern position for.
FY twenty?
FY twenty for the uh transci- transcription services, wait one minute.
Second.
Oh, shit.
Aye.
Aye. Permits close to signing still?
Oh, yeah, there's signatures going on there. Okay, and that is it for budgets.
So those are just the individual signatures, and now we're getting the decision signatures?
Thank you, and now we got the.
Now is there a decision that we, another decision that you pulled up for copies, did that make it back into the file?
I think that's what you just handed him.
Yes.
That's Brookstreet?
Two of them?
Yes, there should be two of them right there.
Okay, then we're good.
Yes, yep, you're good. So, and then, Peter, just to ask, um, in a report, um I guess there hasn't been one done on behalf of the planning board for a while?
Many years.
Many years.
You wanna take a stab at it?
Sure. I could certainly try.
Uh, and it would be presented for the, the town meeting in June.
Yes.
And uh, let's collaborate, you pick, you make the first stab, and I'll, I'll puncture, I'll make the puncture wounds.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
And uh, and then in June, or in, in April, when the new chairman is here, that person can uh finalize it.
Take over, okay, well, they do have to have it by the end of the month, so that they can go to publication.
Oh, okay, well then, yeah.
So, I'll take a stab at it.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, it's, it should be very short, it's in dry, we did this, these many permits and these many formas, and our income was this, and our outgoing was that, and gee, you know, dry, quick, short, but you're right, it hasn't been done in
Yes. Yes. Quite some time.